Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Amy Ham Kelly, Board of Adjustment Report.
Good morning. This morning we have a recommendation for approval. It was unanimous. It was a consideration of a request, oh, excuse me. A consideration of a request for a vertical retaining wall along the shoreline of a man-made canal and to include maintenance dredging with fill being placed behind the retaining wall within the critical habitat zone on property located at 3 Marty Garraway. Lot 4 Holiday Beach, Unit 1, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Elva Peppers, Agent for Brent Burke, applicant. This was previously approved June 21st, 2016. They had some delays, so it expired, so they're requesting a new approval.
There wasn't no questions about it?
No ma'am.
It came before the board?
Aye ma'am.
Okay.
I have the Board of County Commissioners' minutes.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. The second item we have is a special exception to place a church within an existing commercial building. And this is located right, here's Badcock, no, this is Badcock, here. And then there's an auto glass repair, U-Haul business, and then the old Charlie's Lounge. They're wanting to place a church within that old Charlie's Lounge. I hate to refer it to that way, but that's how people remember it. But churches going in existing buildings have to go through a special exception to build or place within a building. It's been approved by the planning and zoning to go for a special exception. You guys referred it to the Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustments referred it back to you for a recommendation for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, there is a third item that was removed. It was the 701 Buck Street variance that was tabled last month, but they have withdrawn And that concludes the Board of Adjustments.
And now we're to the planning and zoning report?
Yes, sir. This morning, we have a recommendation for approval. It was a unanimous vote. It's a consideration of a request for a commercial site plan review to construct a two-story steel building less than 5,000 square feet and rehabilitation of an existing dock structure as it exists in area oak, area cover and dimensions. Located at 500 US Highway 98, Appalachia Cola, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Dan Garlic Environmental Associates, Inc., Agent for Kerry Williams, applicant. This morning, this is basically an oyster hatchery. It's located just east of Steamer's Roll Bar. It was later an Italian restaurant. There was an existing building on site. It has since been removed.
So move.
Okay.
Sir?
The property's on C1, this is the principal use.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Amy, I would like to ask a question.
Okay.
Just to the left of what you're doing, that's where the old Steamer's is?
It is. That's correct.
I'm just making sure it's exactly where I thought it was. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
The second item we have on the agenda, let me get there. It's recommendation for approval. There was a four-to-one vote. It's a consideration of a request for a commercial site plan review to construct a convenience store located at 214 Highway 98 East, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Associates, Agent for Hassan Bakari. He's the applicant. Basically, they're wanting to put a commercial convenience store, a Marathon gas station. We went over the site plan, and I'll show you the site plan here. It's located, the old nursing home site is just to the west of the property. This is the old nursing home site, and this is the property they're wanting to place the Marathon gas station. There are, it is C2 commercial business, meets all the setbacks. The building size is 2,607 square feet. They're required to have 13 parking spaces, but they do have 14, plus they have 10 fueling stations. There are, it is considered partly isolated wetlands that's regulated by the state. They will be required to get an environmental resource permit. In that environmental resource permit, they will be required to do some mitigation. And also, they'll have to have an Army Corps of Engineer permit. They will have to have a core permit and an ERP permit for their stormwater as well. They're proposing to bury the fuel tanks. Both tanks appear to be about 15,000 gallons per tank, so it's about 30,000 gallons. They're below their 80 percent lot coverage.
You said they're gonna bury the fuel tanks?
Yes, sir. I'll give you a site plan showing, let me make this larger. They propose to put a cut, an FDOT cut on Highway 98. They're proposing to also have a Bagonia Street access and a Creamer Street access. The tanks are proposed in the northwest corner of the property.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jones has a comment to make about this particular project.
Yeah, I was just waiting for the appropriate time. I'm sorry, I didn't know. I do need to abstain from voting on this. I declare a conflict. My direct employer is associated with this project, so if anybody doesn't think there's something crazy going on, I'm declaring a conflict.
Don't move.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? Now exactly what are we, a consideration of a request for a commercial site plan review? And then you mentioned a lot of contingencies. You gotta get this, you gotta get that, so any approval should be contingent upon them receiving all those permits?
That's correct. They do have to get an environmental resource permit. They are in the process of doing that. They also have to have an environmental resource permit for their stormwater and their Army Corps of Engineer permits.
Mr. Lockley, would you make your motion contingent upon them receiving all those permits?
We, I'll make a motion contingent on them getting all the permits.
And would you mean your second, Commissioner Massey? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments by the board?
Yeah, well, they're gonna let y'all know when they get them, or they got to come back in front of us?
They will have to bring it into us. We would not be able to permit it without those permits.
Okay.
So they wouldn't issue a building permit until they get all the permits?
No, yes, sir. That's correct.
Any other comments from the board?
I've just got a question. Amy, how many acres altogether?
It is 1.8 acres.
And then you got, right here, you got wetlands cleared, 0.75 acres. Okay. Lot of, it's a lot of wetlands in there.
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am. Sorry.
It's all right.
Um, yes, ma'am, they are isolated, so they do, they would have to go through the environmental resource permitting.
That's the only way I would have voted for it, is contingent on all permits available because of the wetland situation.
Yes, ma'am. If they do not receive those permits, then this is off the board.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? We do have Commissioner Jones abstaining. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for, with Commissioner Jones abstaining.
This morning also, every year we have to recertify our floodplain paperwork for the community rating system, and we're required to place this item on the agenda, have it noted in the minutes, and in order for this project to be counted. So I'm just, I'm submitting this community rating system progress report. Basically, it's a list of projects that is either completed, ongoing, incomplete, in progress, or deleted, or deferred, that's on the local mitigation strategy, the LMS project list. And I just wanted to make this available to the commissioners and also to the county, whoever's interested in obtaining this list for projects that they may be interested in. So if anybody has any questions, they can obtain this at any time by giving me a call, and I'll be happy to email it to them.
The local mitigation strategy is actually a document that's maintained by the emergency management office. So Amy participates, always coming from the planning and zoning, the floodplain management, but the overall LMS has been in place for more than a decade. We amend it periodically. Pam probably brings it to you all once every two years, maybe, Amy, after you get this.
It removes every five, but I think it updates once a year.
And so, you know, projects are added on and taken off. Like the Algarve Point Road has been on since the inception of this thing, and probably stay on it forever. But these are, we have to have, sometimes FEMA requires that a project be on the LMS, and so we sometimes are adding things and taking off based on what FEMA's making us do. But you're trying to identify infrastructure improvements in the community that, you know, are at risk for flooding or damage. That's why it's mitigation, and so you're trying to find ways of getting those done, and usually we get FEMA money to do it.
Ms. Amy, do you need them to take action on this?
Basically, I need it to be noted in the minutes. It's on the agenda, so that's all that I will need. Now, you do have a recertification application in front of you that I will need to have signed in order to be submitted by May 1st.
Yeah, that requires a motion and a second.
Okay.
Pleasure on the board.
Aye.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, that concludes my.
Does the board have any comments, Ms. Amy, this morning? If there are no comments, thank you for your report today.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Kurt Blair, TDC report.
Morning Commissioners. Got a chilly one in here today, freezing. Wanted to report, you've got detached to your packet today, our collections report. You'll see that most recently we're up about $10,000. But the critical thing is that we're running even, basically, with last year's numbers. And with the exception, this is as of February, we have some anecdotal information, I guess I call it anecdotal, we're seeing an interesting rise in our web hits on our internet and our, the visitor center report that I provided in your packet indicates that March and April are gonna be very, very solid or big months for us. They were last year. So I think it's just safe to say we're doing what we were doing last year, and we've got a real strong season coming up ahead of us. I would expect by the end of the year that we'll be up a little bit over last year, but I wouldn't expect that it's gonna be anything terribly dramatic. We, the TDC board reviewed their budget proposal at their last meeting, and it'll be submitted to the clerk at the appropriate time when we're requested and prepared for your discussion at the end of June. The board did mention that, and we will monitor collections to see what happens between now and your budget hearings. They would like to, you'll remember last year, we approved some money to increase the paydown of the Lombardi loan. We paid down about $100,000 of that loan in addition to the regular monthly payments that the county's obligated to. So to our best estimate, that loan is now down slightly over $600,000. And they would like to do that again this year. At the moment, we don't see any dramatic extra funds that are available, but inasmuch as we're beginning to go into our spring and summer season, we expect that we'll see some pretty good activity there, and they may do, they may suggest a supplemental request when your budget comes up to allocate some funds for the additional paydown of Lombardi chart. I mentioned that our visitor center numbers have been up for March and certainly even for the beginning of April. Most dramatically, our numbers at the East Point Center have over-doubled. They're from around 220, 220 people per month, up to 550. And we can only guess that the change in the sign has a dramatic impact on the number of people that are coming by, but that activity is, has increased substantially. And I will point out that the nature of the visitor typically, not all of them certainly, but typically, half of them are people that are in transit through the county from one place to another, and they're coming through on Highway 98. And so they don't know that we're here. They don't know what's available in the community, and this is a good opportunity for us to get them and gives them some information that we would not normally be able to provide because these people don't normally stop and visit for long periods of time. The board approved our hospitality training program. Remember, we do that every year. Gives us an opportunity to train upwards to 20 people in hospitality services. Those that participate and pass the course get a national certification in hospitality services, and, excuse me, that session will be in May. I'll have more information on date and time for you. This is a program that we do in conjunction with Goodwill of Panama City, and we've had a real good response from lodging providers, but certainly not limited to lodging providers. We've had sheriff deputies, county employees, city employees, anybody that comes into contact with the public is eligible to participate in the training program, and we've even had, on occasion, students from the high school that have also participated. So I'll have more information for you on that shortly. The board also approved their annual scholarship. We're awarding two scholarships at $500 to students from Franklin County High School that have indicated an interest in going on and majoring in a subject related to hospitality. So we're in the process of soliciting applications for that, and we'll be making those grants in time for graduation. Just a quick comment about legislation. I know we talked a lot about it over the course of the session. After the review of the results of last session, we found that very little passed that has to do with Franklin County tourism-wise. House Bill 3, which was the onerous bill that had all kinds of increased requirements for tourist development councils and Visit Florida, did not pass. It died in the last days of the session. There was a bill that did pass that provided the opportunity for counties to spend TDC funds on certain infrastructure items like sewers and water systems and whatnot. That bill passed, but it is limited only to counties that generate over $10 million in tourist tax, so that doesn't include the small rural counties. Bills relating to the regulation of rental companies and a national reservation system did not pass. That was the bill that was going to take the responsibility for regulating those rental options away from local governments to decide and make them a state function. Those did not pass, so you will remember, we've been talking about the issue about collecting the tax locally as well as doing some sort of a registration program for lodging companies. We'll be coming to you in the future with some recommendations on that. And finally, at your last meeting, you requested that Michael and I work on a pro forma for the distinction between the costs associated with doing the TDC administration in-house versus continuing it under a contract basis, as it is the case now. We provided you that pro forma. Michael and I went over it and got it to a comfort level that we thought would work, and the conclusion that we come to is that the difference between doing it in-house as well as far as doing it under contract is somewhere around $8,000 a year. We didn't think that was a substantial difference, but, you know, that, those were based on our projections on what we know to be costs associated with doing the administrative services either way, so. So that then leaves the question about if, as to whether you're ready to make a final decision about which way to go on that so that we can proceed to do the advertisements. I do want to mention that our board had a discussion, and Rex Penikoff, one of our board members who's here to talk to you about it, has to do with the schedule for doing these advertisements for the various vendors. And I think I'll, if it's all right with you, I'll let Rex present that, those comments.
Yes, Rex Penikoff for the TDC board. First, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing me to serve on that board. It's a very unique board. It's been a great honor to serve on it. It's really represented. I think it's probably one of the best boards y'all have. The reason, I guess, I'm here today is basically just to leave some of the things about the administration part of the contracts from our chair, Ms. Sanders, and our administrator right now, Mr. Kurt. We basically had a couple of things going on. One was, is we had some discussion and we had some opinions of whether we would like it in-house or out, but we didn't feel that we, at this time, would really give you a recommendation. You'd received information that we did, and we didn't really want to sway y'all's recommendation of whether to stay in or out. We did, with time sensitivity of getting everything advertised and all, there was some discussion that if we decide to keep it as it is now, where we actually go out for bids for an administrator, it's sort of a sensitive area. I know, I understand, but our board has really looked at a lot of things, and we're attacking things that are really sensitive to get it better for the next board and for the county so that it actually moves forward good. And we come to the conclusion that if we keep it as it is out of house, we would request that you allow us to stagger the process of going out for all vendors at one time. Our fear was, is that if we, as of right now, it looks like we probably will have a new administrator. I don't know. I'm not gonna speak to Mr. Kurt's decision or whether to submit a proposal or not, but our fear is, is to put y'all in the position that if we go out for bids for all vendors at one time and we have a turnover of all four, then basically, the board is gonna be presented with the position of trying to find someone to transition this board. You know, because as a voluntary staff, we didn't think that we could adequately make sure that business as normal was maintained and kept if we lost our administrator and all our vendors. We sort of would like to have a process to where someone is in line to keep business going. So our actual recommendation was that if we could figure out some way to either go out for bids for just the administration this year, and then next year, go out for the other three vendors because we think that they are distinctly different. If we could figure out a way that we could do that as a schedule, I think that our board and y'all's boards would, it would be beneficial to y'all. If y'all have any questions or comments on that?
I think we need to make up our minds whether we're gonna go in-house or leave it like it is, and I'd like to have comments from the board and let's make a decision here this morning whether, on the administrative part, two different questions, two different scenarios.
Mr. Chairman, on the in-house versus out-house, well, I mean, that's exactly what it is, out-house, you know, out of house. I, as someone that's worked with TDC for a very long time, and know the responsibilities as you all do of what it entails, I feel like, since this board, TDC board, is a volunteer board, I feel more comfortable leaving it as is, and that is out of the house. I don't want, we've got a good board, a good TDC board. Everybody works together. We're from all aspects of the county. We're diverse, and I just believe that that's the way it needs to stay. And that's my opinion. I'm just stating my opinion, because that's what you asked for, our opinion. So I'm gonna just tell you, I think it needs to stay as it is, myself.
Any other comments from the other board members?
I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, that I concur with Commissioner Sanders. If all of you remember, at our last meeting, I raised the question, well, if I'm on a volunteer board and somehow it's being put in a way that it's all about the county and we're gonna have a county administrator over it, then does my, does my input really hold the same validity as with somebody that's a vendor doing the job? And I'm just fearful that that would create conflicts with a board that volunteers, and I'd like to see it go forward, not backwards, so those are my comments.
Commissioner Massey, you have any comments?
I'm just listening right now on this.
Just listening. I have the same opinion as Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Jones. I'd like to see it stay like it is. That's all, that's all I have to say.
It don't matter to me which way it go. I mean, eight to 10,000 dollars, they gonna make no difference. What we got to start, my thing is, what he talking about the D. I mean, what the rules is on vendors. We supposed to do that every year, every two years? On everything?
Previous to the discussion we had at the last board meeting, the vendor contracts have been renewed annually, year after year. Then Mr. Blair came to this board recently and asked for a, I believe it was a two-year extension on his contract, and the board agreed to that, and then shortly thereafter, the other vendor contracts were also extended in a like fashion. Those two-year contracts for all the vendors are going to be expiring on September 30th of 2018. The discussion I had with the board last week was that exact issue, one-year or two-year contracts. The directions I feel like I got from the board at the last meeting is that when I advertise these contracts in these positions and I prepare these contracts, they're going to be two-year contracts because that's the direction I felt like I got from the board. So unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to pursue these, all the vendor contracts as two-year contracts.
And so, that's two years, and they're out on the 18th, so what you saying, we can't do it? Because we got to renew them this year for the 18th, right?
They expire, we will have to, you'll have to renew those contracts effective October 1st of 2018.
Oh, next year.
There's plenty of time to renew.
Oh, okay.
To advertise all those positions between now and having an effective date of October 1st, 2018. I mean, this is just April 17th. We have plenty of time to advertise, negotiate, and get all of those vendors under contract.
Yeah, that what I'm saying. 18, that, what he was asking, maybe I misunderstood him. You was asking that they be put off?
Or staggered.
Correct. They want to stagger. They, what, as I understand the request, advertise the TDC administrator contract now, this year, 2018. Then I'm assuming what they mean is to renew the vendor contracts, not for a two-year period, but just for, basically, a one-year period for the other vendors, and then have RFPs and advertisements next year because they're concerned about basically losing all of their subcontractors at all, all at the same time. That's their concern, that's their request.
But by the statute, we supposed to been doing it anyway, every year, every two years?
There's really not a contract, excuse me, there's not really a statute that requires...
I meant not the statute, but by the...
That would be board policy.
Board policy, we supposed to be... Board policy, we supposed to have been doing it, so I don't, I don't see we stressing them out, it won't hurt them. Or help them.
Listen, listen, I wanted to handle one subject at a time, is what I was trying to do.
You want me to make a motion, do?
If we're going to leave the administration in-house, let's, let's move forward on that, and then we get into the subject.
I make a motion that we leave the administration of the TDC as is.
Independent contractor.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we, we have a...
Independent contractor.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The only issue I have with staggering the vendor contracts from the administrative contract is that if you hire a new administrator this year, next year you do the vendors, then that administrator and those vendors only have one year to work together before it comes back up for review. I would rather have them done at the same time. And then you have a new administrator. I can't say whether we're going to have new vendors or not. If we've got the best working, I don't think you're going to have new vendors. I think you're going to probably have the same people. But in fairness and transparency, everybody is allowed an opportunity to, to, you know, there's just certain vendors that I don't think there's anybody else in the county that can take their place, because there's nobody else qualified to do what they do. And I'd also like to say that while Commissioner Sanders is still on this board, that I would like her to be able to participate in that.
That's your word.
Now, next year, she won't be here to participate in that. So, you know, it's up to the board, that's just my thoughts.
And I've got to tell y'all something. The TDC is a special thing, and it's near and dear my heart, always has been, and I can't talk about it too much. And I can understa, I can see both sides. You know, I can see both sides, but we definitely have to have somebody that can work together, but the TDC board, they were concerned with a complete overhaul all the way around, and what they were talking about is what's the poss, you know, the possibility, we're going to get a new administrator, that's, that's positive, I mean, we know that. But what if, and, I mean, the thing they were concerned is the leadership on that, on that board talking about, I'm going to be gone, you're going to have another one of the commissioners that they're, they're going to be new at it. And then, what's to say, the vendors don't get in there, or someone comes in here that may take my place, or somebody else's place, or somewhat, and want a whole new TDC board? That's what they were concerned about, is not having consistency in there that could, you know, take care of the situation. But I'm, I work, like I work with the TDC, I work at discretion of the board, just like every one of us commissioners do. So it's whatever the will of this board is, how we handle the vendors' contracts and all, I'm, I'm up to anything.
How long has the vendor contracts been there? Them three talking, how long they've been there?
Well, it's, we've sort of come on gradually, but most of them have been there eight years, seven years.
That changed up, I mean, it's been the same.
Can, can I just speak to where our format is? We don't see a problem now, we have a great staff, we don't think there'll be changeover, but we're looking, what if in the future? If we have a new administrator comes in, that means all your office staff goes with that administrator, because we contract the administrator, and he provides all that. So we lose all of the administration functions. Mr. Kurt, I think, would help us in any way, but if the next administrator comes on and we have a conflict, and he leaves abruptly because he didn't get awarded the renewal of contract, so he leaves and takes all his staff, or the new one doesn't maintain it, then we sort of get in a dilemma of who's going to maintain it. If we have vendors that are established, because most of our plans are not six-month plans, they're a year or two-year. So actually, to do a project, it's not like we discuss it, and we decide to do it, and then we put it in motion. So actually, the new administrator probably is going to inherit our plan of whether it's redoing a website, or something like that. Our, our effort is really to ensure that we're not caught one day with nobody knowing what's going on. And we understand transparency, we trying to make sure that everything's transparent, and we're not. We just trying to, we think that it's in our best interest to recommend to y'all that y'all don't find yourself one day with no one to maintain progression of the TDC board. And I think that our best avenue of doing that is to rotate the administrative vendors with the service vendors, because the two entities are different. And that wouldn't stifle a new administrator from putting his plan and working it into it, it just would assure that you're not having to worry about internet services, and TV services, and ad services with a new administrator that has no time to be caught up to speed of where we're going and what our plan is. And, and, I mean, like I say, and that's just, that's our recommendation. As Ms. Sherrill says, we are an advisory board, that's just how we felt that we should advise y'all that we rotate them. I don't think it matters either way if we go back, I think our genuine concern was making sure that your board was not set up for failure, and that's why we've come to you with this recommendation.
But in the same time, what you saying, that could work two ways. I mean, if you hire a new one, that mean he get to wait a year or so before he can put his plan in work.
Well, I think it would probably take him a year to enact his plan, to see what's going on. And we also sort of, as a board of advisory, we would probably already have a plan that was in progress of changing the internet website like we just did, which took us basically a year to do that. I mean, I don't think we'd want to pay our internet people to change our website, and a new administrator come in and say, no, we're not going to do that, because we're under contract already, we've already spent that money to do that. For him to come in and say, no, we don't want to do that anymore, I don't think, I don't see that being a, a process. I think he would wait until that was through, and yeah, tweak it, or change it to what his vision is, or, or actually, in relevance too, he actually probably should take his lead from what the board's decision is. He really shouldn't be doing his own thing anyway. He should be taking the advice of the advisory board, and then ultimately, y'all's instruction to him of what he should be doing, he won't actually be doing his vision, he'll be doing our vision as a candidate.
That's correct, that's what an administrator does. He administers what the board comes up with, he don't just go out and do his own thing. He administers what the overall board is directing him to do, that's the, the job of the administrator. Mr. Jones, you got a comment?
I, I did have one, but I think it, that time passed, and I sat here and thought about what I was going to say, and I, I'm good.
So we need action from the board, how do y'all want to go about it? Somebody make a motion, somebody make a second, and let's move on?
Make a motion, do like it is. All of them change together.
All of them change together?
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner...
Ms. Sherrill just made a motion just a few minutes ago.
No, I did that for the administrators.
Okay. For the administrators, right.
We're doing both, don't worry.
We're just having a discussion on whether to stagger the contracts, or just go ahead and do it all. The board is not changing, so I don't see the projects changing. As I said, whoever the new administrator is, he's coming in to administer what the board is, the TDC board has come up with, in my opinion. We do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to, to do all the contracts this year, Kurt, and bring them back to us?
Yes, sir.
And we'll go from there.
For two years?
Yes, it is for two years.
Yep, two years.
Administrator and the vendor contract. That was a recommendation of the attorney, or that's what the board directed their attorney to put into the paperwork, for the bid, for the bidding and all that, so. Kurt, you have anything else for us this morning?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda would be Mr. Tim Ash.
I don't see any commissioners, and all he wanted to do was just thank you in the past for approving that Save Voting Week proclamation, and he's done it two years in a row, I think it's the third year. It's May 18th through 25th this year, it's the National Save Voting Week proclamation, and he did confirm with me by email he was coming.
I make a motion to approve.
Sir, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, to approve the resolution as National Save Voting Week, and those dates are May 18th through the 25th, 2018.
And I've got a proclamation to be assigned later today.
Any further discussion on the board? We do have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Next would be a public hearing, and we're almost right on time, Mr. Sherrill. Do we need to do something else for the next five minutes?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
We can't start before 11 o'clock.
Let's do, let's move down to the agenda, Madam Clerk, Ms. Marsha Johnson, report.
I can be through in five minutes.
Okay.
I have three items. Number one is, I need board approval of a contract renewal between the State Department of Revenue and the county, which provides for state-approved payments to the county for service of process in child support cases. To explain, when the state files proceedings in child support cases, our sheriff's department may be required to serve papers on individuals involved in those cases. The sheriff's department usually charges a fee for that service, which is set by law, but they don't collect money in these types of cases. With this contract, the county can be reimbursed at a rate of 66%, which would help offset our cost of performing the service. The current contract was approved for one year in 2017, and this contract renewal period would run for one year from July 1st, 2018, until June 30th, 2019. Attorney Shuler has received a copy for review and told me he was okay with the approval of the contract.
That, that's great.
Pleasure aboard.
So moved.
Second.
We have, y'all lost me there. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, number two is, I'm asking for board approval and execution of a resolution which would allow my office to retain any unspent fees from processing child support cases as contracted with the Department of Revenue. These funds would help support my court budget. That budget has been continually decreased for well over five years, and as the handling of child support cases is a clerk operation, these fees could help my budget and hopefully prevent any loss of jobs in my office. Other small counties have approved similar resolutions in the past few years, including Liberty, Calhoun, and Taylor Counties.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion? I'm also in favor of allowing the clerk to do this. The clerk is always, as Ms. Johnson's been there, is always abided by what the board's asked her, as far as not increasing her budget, staying the same as last year, all these other things, as she continually gets cut by the state. And I don't have a problem in the world of trying to help the clerk out in this instance. And we do have a motion, second on the floor, any further discussion?
I just want to say something. Each year, it seems like the past, about the past five or six years, each year it seems like the clerk's budget is cut more and more, or funds to the clerk's budget has been cut more and more. So I, I'm like you, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with, the clerk knows what she needs to run a department, that's for sure.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank y'all so much. And if for some reason those monies weren't needed, I would certainly turn them back over to the county. The final action item is, we're, my office is going to soon start preparing the letters going out to your constitutional officers, department heads, and other agencies you fund to turn their budgets in. Are there any special instructions you wish to be included in the letter this year?
There was some, and I forgot now. It was. I'll get with the clerk when I think about it. Because it was something...
I want to say, I know that last year, you know, we were, were told to ask that no one increased their budgets. I don't know if y'all want to continue that practice at this point, or, you know, what, if, if there's any special instructions, if you just want to call me or Aaron and let us know in the next few weeks.
Well, I'd say give the board, myself, I'd say give the board a few weeks to think about it, and whatever special instructions we do need to be done here, so the public's aware, and go at it that way. Figure just give us a couple of weeks to think about what we...
Well, the letters, we, we try to get them out this month, because we're asking, they have to be turned in by June 1st, so we'd like to give them a few weeks, but we can wait till the first meeting in May.
First meeting in June?
I mean, first meeting in May.
First meeting in May, that wouldn't put us too far back.
Okay, we can do that, we, I'll just, I'll come back on May 1st if y'all have some suggestions.
This may be what I was thinking about, y'all. My thing is, there is some money at the end of the year at different departments that needs to come back in here, that hasn't came back in here in the past, that we knew had the extra money at the end of the year, and, you know, the different departments. And I, rather than them not bring it in and put it into the general fund, and then buy their furniture or whatever else they want to, they need to let us know that they did have too much money for their budget, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm, my thing is, we have, we have five constitutional officers in this county about it, you have the property appraiser and all those people. And I was just trying to think how I wanted to word it, though, I want it to be to where if they have extra money, bring it in here, you know what I'm saying? Like the sheriff, if the sheriff has extra money, don't find ways of spending it, bring it in here, and we'll, we'll look at the excess money if they need it to fund the rest of their budget or whatever. But, you know, you know, it's hard to, I'm going to dig myself into a hole. Well, I'm not trying to dig myself into a hole, but, but the thing about this is, it's hard to justify, you know, my thing is, you've got some offices that has furniture that's older than the hills, then you've got some, they get brand-new furniture every other year, you know, and different things like that. The, the constitutional officers knows what it takes to run their offices, but at the end of the year, if they have any excess money, it needs to come to the general revenue. I mean, I, I really believe that.
I, I understand what you're saying. I will say, you know, like, because my budget is tight, and there are several, I feel like have tight budgets, sometimes we do have to wait till the end of the year and try to order supplies, you know, paper and things like that, because we've just been so frugal during the year, trying to get by, but, but there are instances, other instances also, so. I think I understand, and I can talk with Aaron and try to figure out something, but I'll come back at your next board meeting, and we'll finalize what you want us to put in the letters.
Do, do anybody know whether we got any unmandated fund coming down?
Unfunded mandate?
Unfunded mandate? Yeah, they always kind of...
Always.
I can show you, we got some.
We definitely have some. I don't know that we have any new ones. I'm getting reports on what the legislature has done, but I have not been able to go through all of those yet, and I'm sure Michael Shuler and Michael Morone are looking at what's coming down right now from the legislative session.
I think, I think kind of what Commissioner Sanders is trying to say, that if any offices have unspent funds, and they have a need for it, then they need to come forward to board and justify those needs.
An act.
Or else turn them over back into general fund.
Yeah, because a lot of times, they go out there, and then we're, we're up here cutting other depart, not cutting other departments, but telling them to keep it to a minimum, and then you got other, other departments, and I'm not specifically saying, I mean, over 20 years, I've seen a lot of difference in here. And I surely, this being my last, last budget workshop and budget, you know, to, to do the budget for Franklin County, I don't want to go out with no bad feelings, but at the same time, I want them to understand that, you know, they can get the stuff, but come and show us the respect to ask us, or to inform us.
And I understand, and I think the constitutionals would understand, and, and I'll, I'll tell you, I mean, I've kind of said to my finance office, we, you know, we're redoing the public vendors' office, which needs to be done, but we're doing other things, and I said, sometimes I feel like we're neglecting the main courthouse building, which is, needs some things done to... the main courthouse building, which is, needs some things done to, you know, to improve it. So I'm like, at some point, we've got to start holding back some money for our courthouse maintenance instead of putting it in other places sometimes. So I think I.
That's basically what I'm saying.
So, I appreciate you, and the resolution this morning will help me, and my staff will know that y'all allowed it. And like I said, if that money does not, is not needed, we'll definitely, I turn in my excess funds to the county every year, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next will be a public hearing. Orders to rescind ordinance eighty-seven point four. Dash four, sir.
Yes, sir. May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As the chairman said, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance entitled as follows. An ordinance of Franklin County, Florida, repealing ordinance eighty-seven dash four, entitled the Franklin County Plan Unit Development Ordinance, and ordinance establishing requirements for planned unit developments and providing for planned unit developments in Franklin County, Florida, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call for public comment on this ordinance that's being proposed.
Public comment on the proposed ordinance? Please raise your hand, come forward, state your name for the record. This is a public hearing. We're calling for public comment on ordinance eighty-seven dash four. There being a public comment?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I've asked Mr. Pierce to provide some testimony to the board and for the benefit of the public concerning two subject matters, and I'm sure he'll ad lib from there. But the two subject matters that need to be addressed is for the, an explanation to the board of what a planned unit development is, and then specifically for Alan to give some personal testimony from his knowledge, because he was here around the time that ordinance eighty-seven dash four was originally proposed, and why we, he and I both feel from a technical standpoint, the ordinance was never actually adopted. But we, it is still on the books, and we've had some problems that I'll go into later after Alan is finished. So, Mr. Pierce with that?
Yeah, a planned unit development is a, is a tool to create a mix of uses in a, in a particular development. It says planned unit, and usually the mixes include commercial, residential, rec, uh, usually three, commercial, recreational, and residential all mixed together. Franklin County's experience with PUDs hasn't been extensive, and it hasn't really, and a PUD in Franklin County has never been a separate creation. It's always been associated with a much larger project, either a DRI or some other, other tool that we create as PUDs. And so the PUDs by Franklin County's standpoint haven't, we haven't utilized that ordinance in my thirty years here. It is a tool that's used in urban areas quite a bit, but we're not an urban county, and we don't have all the tools necessary to properly implement PUDs. They can be complicated, and there can be lots of conflict if they're not done properly. So I certainly support the idea of getting rid of the PUD ordinance the county has on its books. And just to go into that subject now, the PUD ordinance, I got here on June first, nineteen eighty-eight. For some reason, and I apologize, I can't give you the exact reason, the county, while it was designated an area of critical state concern in nineteen eighty-six, sometime in nineteen eighty-seven, when we are an area of critical state concern, the county adopted this PUD ordinance. We adopted it without the support of the governor and cabinet. So the county adopted an ordinance that ultimately the governor and cabinet did not approve. So the county's records were very confusing, and it was very hard to explain to people that the county commissioned adopting an ordinance, but the ordinance was not effective because it was not carried forward by the governor and cabinet when we are an area of critical state concern. So for those twenty-five years, we had an ordinance on the books that if a developer came in and said, "Well, I'm going to just do a PUD," I had to say, "No, you're not, because it's not affected by the governor and cabinet." "Well, then why is it on the books?" Well, you know, it was very complicated, and we never utilized the book. We never utilized the ordinance, but yet it was on the books. And so I agree completely with Mr. Schuler that in my thirty years, we've never really had a need for freestanding PUD ordinance, and now's the time to get rid of it. I'm trying to retire and get out of this thing, so my memory's going to go away. And since I'm the last person standing, I say, "Let's do it away now before anybody else forgets why it was even there."
And following up on that comment about some of the confusion from developers and other members of the public, at that time, in the late eighties, when the county was an area of critical state concern, your land use regulations, although they were local ordinance, while we were subject to that designation, your land use ordinance has never became effective unless you got a subsequent approval from the governor and cabinet. We never got that approval for this particular ordinance. So we've always taken the position it doesn't, it's not effective. And we have had one lawsuit recently where a private corporation, Capital City Bank, sued the county claiming that we had somehow violated this non-existent ordinance. And so we had to spend public dollars in a lawsuit, successfully, I'll add, defending that position. So to clear up the confusion and avoid potential lawsuits in the future, the recommendation from staff is to, for you to adopt the ordinance, repealing ordinance eighty-seven dash four.
And if in the future you ever have a development come in that wants a mixed use, you can re-impose another PUD ordinance with the specific needs of that development, but why have one on the books now that's not going to serve any purpose?
That's correct.
Pleasure aboard.
I'm making a motion, Mr. Pierce, we rescind it, get rid of it.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lackler, second by Commissioner Massey. Do you rescind that order? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
That concludes the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. Time to move on to the next item on the legislative.
The next item will be Ms. Deborah Belter, Fair Housing Public Workshop.
Good morning. I have a fair housing presentation for you today. This is pretty much what we have done in the past. The county, when it gets a community development block grant, has to do a quarterly fair housing activity. And also, in preparing a grant application for more funds, we need to do a fair housing presentation. So this is serving two purposes. First of all, for the benefit of the public, let me just state that there are federal, state, and local fair housing laws. The federal was adopted in nineteen sixty-eight, and as amended, it prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of dwellings, and that includes advertising and marketing, and even utilities and all kinds of things. But it's for dwellings and other housing-related transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, and disability. And the HUD and the Department of Justice have, and the courts, have been broadening their interpretations of this, like, right now, sex includes gender orientation, familial status includes things like pay during maternity leave, the familial status, that's for that. And then, like, disability, it's like, you got to waive pet deposits if somebody says it's an emotional support animal. I mean, it's, it's really broadened through the years, how this is all going. And it's, in some ways, it's broader than the Americans with Disabilities Act, because that is like service animals, and this is like emotional support. So there are some differences between them. There's federal laws, and there's state laws. Florida handles theirs through the Florida Commission on Human Relations. And then there is a local fair housing ordinance that the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners has, too. Some of the trends, as I've alluded to, in fair housing, it, it's less about race and that type of thing now, more about disability and familial status, national origin. Most, all the race ones dealt with Hispanics relating to national origin of the cases that were done last year, except for one, and that was, um, this, to me, this is a real stretch. They're saying that if a rental property owner uses felony records as a reason to not approve a rental application, that's racial discrimination. And, I mean, it, it just keeps, you know, the interpretation just keeps getting broader and broader on these things. So I'm just making you and the public aware of the trends, not saying right or wrong. That's just, I'm reporting what's in effect. So some of the examples of discrimination are refusing to make a comm, reasonable accommodations for a person with disabilities, refusing to allow tenants to make reasonable modifications at the tenant's expense. And, like, under familial status, it would be charging a higher deposit for a household with children than for, for a household without children for the same dwelling. National origin, I even saw a case where a utility company got sued because they were requiring different deposits for people who were not citizens and didn't have permanent status. And their, their, the utilities' position was, oh, they're subject to leaving, so we need more of a deposit, and that didn't hold up. So, you know, that's, that's just an example of things that are not what people used to think of as fair housing laws. And sexual favors, that's the kind of thing that is, you know, implied in some cases for discrimination. And I have some materials on fair housing that if anyone would like, I think they're in the board packets, but, yeah, I think that's, I think you already have that. If anybody is interested, it's information about fair housing and also about the State of Florida Commission on Human Relations. Are there any questions?
Are we referring to this document dated January the third, nineteen eighty-five?
You talking about the fair housing ordinance?
Yes.
It has been amended. The last amendment was ninety-three. Yes.
Do you feel it is still satisfactory?
I would recommend that instead of saying physical disability, it just state disability, because mental is supposed to be included as a category of disabled. You do have a few things in there that are beyond what the federal and state has. I think it includes some things like, if I remember correctly, military, marital. There are a few things that were not required. And at the time of the last modification, I think there was some discussion as to which items you wanted to take out, and age was the only thing that was removed, if I'm remembering correctly.
Well, I mean, this is a public workshop, and I don't know really what we're expected to do, but I would probably say that the attorney needs to look at this and make sure it, or working with you, some things need to be taken out. There may be some things that need to be added from ninety-three to two thousand eighteen, and just review it. I mean, you've got to have action from the board that directs the attorney to do that, but I, I think it would be wise to do that and make sure this, that our document is up to snuff with today's time, I guess, for better lack of words. And it may be fine. I don't know. He's the legal man. I'm not, but I'm just saying, after a period of years and all the changes that the world's going through, would somebody on the board like to make that recommendation, to have the attorney look at this document?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to ask the attorney to look at it.
And work with Ms. Belter if she has any suggestions for him to.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lackler. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Belter, is there anything that we need to do? This is a public workshop. Do we need to call for public comment or anything like that?
If you want to formally do that, I ask, and then we're none, but, but you as the chairman, it would be a good idea to have it on record.
Any, any public comment? This is a public workshop on the fair housing document that we have in place. And the board has just made a motion to have the attorney look at it, see if there's any upgrades, anything different that needs to be added or deleted out of that document. The last revision was in nineteen ninety-three, so I think it's time that the attorney looks at that. Any public comment? There being no public comment. Is there anything else we need to do as far as the fair housing public workshop?
No, sir. No, sir, not on that.
Okay, we'll move down to the next item, which is Report on Current and Future CDPG Grant. Oh, we didn't, we didn't vote, I'm sorry. Did we?
I haven't.
Yeah, we did.
I hear you voted.
Yeah, we did.
I thought so. The only one I heard reply was Commissioner Jones. Everybody else didn't have much to say, so. Yeah, I do remember that. But anyways, okay, Ms. Belter.
Okay, we are on the last house home rehab now that should be finishing up around the end of this month. We will be closing out this grant in time to meet our May ninth deadline for finishing, and that will enable the county to reapply for another grant. I don't know when that cycle is going to open and close. Has not been formally announced, but I think we should proceed with getting the, a Citizen Advisory Task Force appointed for the next grant. And the task force, according to the state stat, the state regulations and the local policy, you need five members. And of those five, at least three need to be in the low-to-moderate income category. Do you have something in your packet that looks like this?
Yes.
Okay. This contains the income limits by household size for what's considering, considered to meet that income limit for Franklin County. So we need to have you appoint five members, preferably outside of a city limit, and three of the five, it could be more than three, but a minimum of three, would need to have household incomes within these limits. And then what their role would be is to consider the county's needs and what can be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, and then make a recommendation as to what should be applied for. If you'll, just give you a little history of what's happened in the past. For several cycles, we did infrastructure improvements, water sewer, storm drainage, road paving. And it got to the point where, in order to be competitive, you had to do a certain number of households included and real high percentages of low to moderate income, including very low, and contribute already designed plans and leverage and all those kind of things. And so to be competitive, we sort of ran out of infrastructure projects that would score well. So the last time, the county said, "Well, let's apply for housing." And so that's what was done, and you got your housing grant. And so I'm sort of expecting that to be the result of what happens this year, but that needs to be recommended, and, and we would need to have a public hearing also. So the sequence is, you appoint a task force. We have an advertised task force meeting and an advertised first public hearing. And after the first public hearing, then you decide we want to apply for this or that. And then we proceed with the application, and then there's a second public hearing on the draft application, and then it goes in.
So Ma'am, Ma'am Williams will get beat up again.
Because of being in, representing mostly the city.
On the appointment of this task force board, who going to come up with those names? Or does the commission supposed to come up with names for that? And that's not going to happen today, because?
Right, right.
You got to talk to these people and see if they're willing to serve on the board.
Well, my recommendation is that you appoint them at your next board meeting, and you could either direct staff to come up with the recommended slate, or you each have a recommendation.
Well, you do me one, Pete. When you get it, put it in big letters, "Don't apply for the city," because the people get mad.
Yeah, now, the city of Appalachia Cola, just for your information, is now on the same application cycle they are applying, and they will have a choice of applying for housing if that is what they.
That's what they want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's what the commission decides is their priority.
I think the board probably should direct staff to come up with this task force. I don't know anybody, I mean, unless you're gonna put, unless everybody's gonna put it on the radar and get somebody that meets the income requirements and all that, you can't just give a name, they gotta meet a certain criteria.
What about the people you had last time?
We can include those, if, you know, assuming-
Do they participate?
I think, I'm pretty sure four out of the five, for sure.
Let's have, let's have somebody on the board make a recommendation that staff get with Ms. Belcher, and try to get this board established or something like that. Somebody wanna make that motion?
Mr. Noah?
Yeah, I make a motion that we, somebody at the staff, get with Ms. Belcher, and y'all get all the information you need and bring it back next week, bring it back to-
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Lackler, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion on that one issue? All those in favor? All opposed? Our motion carries. And was there another issue that we need to deal with?
You can do this at your next board meeting, but I would like to be authorized to work with Mark Harrington and Michael Moron to, go ahead, once the task force is officially appointed, to schedule the meeting for the task force and first public hearing and get it advertised.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lackler. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Our motion carries also.
I have a question, Ms. Belcher. Wonder if we're gonna be able to actually work on the ladies' houses that, I mean, you've been talking about?
The next application cycle should be coming up this summer. I cannot tell you when because of the state being in a rule amendment process, and I don't know exactly how long that's going to take. But the next application cycle, if the board applies for a housing grant, and if it's funded, we will go back, I will, and assuming I'm your administrator, I will go back through the list of names that we had from this grant, people who applied and maybe were eligible, but because it was gonna be a replacement house, you know, we can't do all replacements. We need a balance of replacements with rehabs to make the budget work. So we'll go back through the list of people who already inquired and were interested, as well as we'll announce the availability of funds for other people to come in. But at that point, we can go back through and start re-updating applications, inquire, you know, like, who's, call people and say, are you still interested? If you are, let's update an application, and then come back again to give you recommendations. And if you want to revise the housing policy that's in effect now, we can do that either during the application process or after the grant's funded, whatever that is your preference. And the policy that's in effect now meets all the requirements of the state, so it would not be necessary for you to amend that policy. However, you did mention that you, I think, if I'm remembering you correctly, that you did not want to necessarily say you wanted to go back with mobile home, new mobile homes for, in the case of a replacement dwelling. So that would be something for you to think about, and you don't need to decide now. But the policy, whatever tweaks you make in the policy, that's what will be applied to the next grant.
But can I, can this be on, this is on mobile home, is there, they got one way to be housing mobile home?
You can, you can completely have that option. The board's rationale, as I understood it, was that the ship program is already in place, and the ship program does not work on mobile homes, and because you have so many people living in mobile homes, this grant was like your opportunity to help the people who'd already always been left behind and all of that. And so that's why there was a focus on mobile homes. But that was a strictly local policy, it was not required. It was just, just because you felt the need to give assistance to people with mobile homes.
Mr. Chairman? Debbie, for about the past five or six years, that family over in Carabel has really laid on mine and Commissioner Mast's heart.
Inside the city?
Yeah, but see, you're saying that we can't do that, and there is so much need right now, 'cause her son has been diagnosed with a disease that he's not gonna be better, and-
The ship program gonna help?
No, and they've tried the USDA stuff too, and-
Now, is it the ship program, it, what is the issue with using-
It's a mobile home.
Okay, it, does it need to be replaced?
It needs to be completely replaced.
Let me give you, let me give you a thought.
It's inside the state limits of Carabel.
Okay, your ship policy is a discretionary policy, that there are some requirements that the state has, like you have to cer, do a certain percentage of your money on construction, certain percentage on homeownership, certain percentage for the different income levels. But within that, they don't, for example, CDBG says they have a point system. Like you get more points the more houses you do, up to a certain, at some point, that level's off. And so we always promise the highest number of points, so we base the number of houses we're committing on that score factor. Well, the ship program, to my knowledge, does not have that. So if you wanted to waive your limits of assistance on a case-by-case basis, and say, we will build a replacement home, you have the authority to do that. So that's how you could handle. Now, of course, you have to keep in mind that if you do that, there's more people that don't get assistance because one gets a lot, that means fewer, or, or more people get a small amount, either way.
Well, it would be a lot better, I know you just mentioned just a few minutes ago that the city of Appalachia Cola is applying for the same grant that we're applying to the city-
Well, they're applying for the CDBG now, I can't, I can't put words in their mouth, 'cause they haven't had the hearing.
You gotta let me finish what I said. It would be nice if the city of Carabel, and I've got the mayor sitting out there, could do something like that, because there is some people in need. And this one family, I mean, it just tears at my heart every day, every day. And I just wish there was something I could do for them, but there's not, and because of the criteria.
Another six, eight months, they won't have nowhere to stay.
They're lucky to come through the winter, lucky to come through the winter.
You need anything else out of the board this morning?
No, sir.
Any more comments from Ms. Belcher from the board? Thank you for coming in today to board recess five minutes.